We're ready to move on.
Well, it's getting close to leaving another.
We got three minutes.
Okay, let's move fast.
All right, next, I'm sorry, what do I say here? Next item, please.
At special consideration of an item, an action item, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss on, vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. I'd like to exclude number three, please.
Hold on, Trustee Moses, I was having a hard time hearing you. Did you say number three?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you want to pull it for a separate vote or did you just have a question on it?
For a separate vote.
Separate vote, okay. Trustee Barry.
Let me just make sure, eighteen, please.
Number eighteen, okay. Any other items? I'm sorry, Trustee Barry, did you say to pull that one or just a question?
Pull, yes.
Thank you. Any additional? What item is this? All right, we also need to pull item thirteen.
We just need to, we're revising, there's one employee on leave that there's been a development and will not be going on leave. Jennifer Minier, so we're gonna pull that off of the provision.
But nothing else changes on that item?
No.
So are we pulling eighteen or? I mean thirteen.
We're not pulling thirteen. We're pulling three and eighteen, correct?
Three, thirteen, eighteen.
We're pulling three and eighteen. Is Trustee Moses clear on that? Yes.
Okay.
I think he asked about eighteen.
What did you say?
No, I'm sorry, I was mistaken. I was saying we're only pulling three and eighteen.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so move the action items numbered one through eighteen.
No, twenty.
Nineteen.
Well, actually, sorry, we've got twenty-seven now, Trustee Moses.
We have supplement.
So they'll be, to move action items one through twenty-seven with the exceptions of three and eighteen, be approved as recommended to this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Tie goes to the runner, Trustee Barry.
Trustee Bear.
Hold on one second. Trustee Barry made the motion, Trustee Petlicoff seconded it. Any discussion on any of those items that I didn't hear that there was gonna be any?
No, but we have to extend time.
Okay, thank you.
So, but we have a motion on the table right now to approve, so let's approve it and then extend, do the other motion for extending time.
Roll call.
Yeah, Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes, can I get a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Could I get a roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes. Trustee Moses, we're gonna have Trustee Watts do the summary once we're all done. Just so you are aware of that.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, now, is this before we get to action on item number three? We need a motion for that one.
Yeah.
What's that?
We need.
Hold on, hold on. Going back to eighteen, I'm not motioning, I'm not motioning through here right now. Going back to eighteen, knowing that there's an election in November with the new administration coming in January, I'm gonna put a motion on the table to table number eighteen until we have further discussions with the new administration. And I'm looking at item number five in the contract, which I'm not gonna disclose, just item number five. That's a motion I'm putting on the table.
We need a second.
I'll, I'll support that motion.
So, yes.
On that one, then, what we would need, then, there's no discussion.
Why there's no discussions, motion on table was supported, we can go into discussion.
Well, because when I'm looking at my cheat sheet, it says that it's not debatable if we're putting a motion to table an item.
Point of order, there's a motion on table that was supported and we have to have some kind of discussion before we vote on it.
Not, not if you're voting to table something. If you're, if you're wanting to.
Yeah, you're voting to table, not, not a new motion.
Okay.
So.
There would be a roll call vote.
It would be a roll call vote, is that what you wanted to do, though? Is what I'm asking.
I'm putting a motion on table to table it, because like I said very clear, there's gonna be new administration, we should give that new administration some kind of.
Okay.
They need to get involved in this discussion, because there's gonna be some cost into this.
So on this one?
I know for sure at least one of the candidates, possibly both of them are gonna probably scrap this as soon as they move in, so that's why I'm doing this, but.
So we would just need a majority vote on this one. So, Trustee Moses, can you call the vote?
Sure. Trustee Barry?
Yes. To table.
Trustee Deambrazio. Not present. Trustee McDonald?
Yes, to table.
Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Oh, did you already do you? Okay.
Yes.
I'm a no.
Okay. Trustee Watts? Trustee Watts, sorry?
She hasn't answered yet.
Give me a minute. Can we just, we can't discuss before you vote, Kelly.
I thought we could, but he's got his cheat notes, I agree with him.
Is it now?
A present or?
No, and going back, did, Trustee Petlicoff, did you answer?
I said no.
I thought you said I don't know, sorry, I misheard you.
No.
Okay.
Three, three.
Right.
Motion does have a table, yeah, there's no majority.
All right, going back to number three.
Three.
Can you read item number three, please, Trustee Moses?
Just recommended action?
Yes, please.
Recommended action, it is recommended that approval to be made by NWEA for the purchase of a K to eighth annual license or of NWEA in grades K to eight for the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petlicoff, supported by Trustee Barry. Discussion, Trustee Moses?
Yes, for the longest time I've been on this board, I've been a proponent of making sure that we minimize testing.
Trustee Moses, we're, we're not hearing you too well right now. Are you close to your microphone?
I am, let me turn off my business, maybe it's dying out. Second here. Can you hear me now better?
A little bit better and we're gonna work on it on our end to try to turn up the volume. Please go ahead.
So, as I was saying, for the time that I've been on the board, I've been a proponent of making sure that we minimize testing, we spend more time on instruction and we depend more on what the teachers bring as remarks and that we already have multiple amount of testing. NWEA is one of those tests that take a lot of time, that teachers even say that it, sometimes it does not tie to the curriculum, it's not actually tied to the curriculum. So, I am advocating to minimize the testing in our district. And although I do understand NWEA brings some benefit to some students and some families, but it does also hurt others who, especially new immigrants, who are taking those exams. And we are using it also as a tool to evaluate teachers when it's not completely tied to the curriculum that they teach. So instead, some do teach NWEA or they at least teach how to pass that exam when in reality they should be focused on the curriculum. So I ask my colleagues also to reevaluate in this motion as well. It says that we're gonna be evaluating the testing right now that we're doing in our district and I would hope that we do that evaluation prior to approving this contract.
Additional discussion? Trustee Watts?
So, just to remind everyone, the state requires, because this is more, this isn't, this is different than the M step, right? So the, the state requires the M step. The state doesn't require the NWEA. But I've spoken with some teachers and they prefer the NWEA because it gives them immediate results versus the M step. But correct me that we can't swap the NWEA to M step, correct? I know we had to.
Correct, we have, we have to follow what the state says. And my understanding is that we're likely to get reimburseings in that, correct, Dr. Patterson, for this funding, and I can also tell you that Dr. Patterson has met with the committee and they're looking at ways to reduce the assessment. So the stuff that had been brought up at several board meetings ago, he did a survey and he has a committee looking at, you know, potential reduction.
If I could just make one clarification, actually, this fall, we are required by state legislation to administer a benchmark. There are some choices. Our district is familiar with NWEA, switching to something in the fall would require us to do some training with teachers and try something differently. And the cost is fully reimbursed this year. After the last meeting that we had in the spring, I did administer a survey to our staff proposing several ways to reduce testing. Most of those were met with approval. Now that school is back, we're going to be getting our elementary, middle school assessment committees together to go over those recommendations and propose some changes. And we have also, will be getting a team of teachers and some administrators together this year to review different options for benchmark assessments other than just NWEA, but we wanted to take time to get all of our stakeholders involved in that decision-making. So currently, and I think the link is in the in the action item. Yeah, it is, it is required to be, that we have to administer a benchmark in K through eight twice this year. Once in the first fifteen weeks of school and then a second time sometime after that period and the state gives us some flexibility.
Was that added during COVID?
It was added last year and then it was added once more again for this year. Prior to that, there were some other requirements for benchmark testing, but that was K through three at the reading by third. Last year, they did start requiring it for K through eight, again this year. I'm not sure what that will look like moving forward, but it is a requirement for this year. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, and I know I spoke with Dr. Mila, because you did do the presentation. When do you think the timeline until you can, I guess, come together with this committee and come back with some sort of recommendations or some way to streamline
for?
Testing?
Yeah, so for the, for our current year, I think we'll have some recommendations within the next month or so. We just need to, most of these decisions are not made by, like, by myself or by a small group of people. We take them back to the committees and then also review them with the principals as well. So now that staff is reporting back, we're gonna be taking those to them. And like I said, the survey results were in favor of reducing some of the testing load in winter and in spring as well. And then, in terms of looking for other choices moving forward, we would want to try to have that back by early spring. We just need to have enough time to get a group together, have some different choices come in, present to the group, have time to deliberate and then bring back a recommendation before the end of the school year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item? Then can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moses? No. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes.
Did you wanna, did you wanna congratulate, will you send him home?
Tage.
Oh, you have planned?
And.
Okay, all right, so make sure.
Yeah.
All right.
He's still half asleep.
We gotta go back to eighteen.
We have to go back to eighteen now.
So eighteen is the inter-local agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Recommended action, move that the Board of Education approve the inter-local agreement for the Dearborn Public School District's security camera system feed to the Dearborn Police Department per board report twenty-one dash eighteen.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petlicoff, supported by Trustee Watts, discussion?
Yeah, go ahead. You go first, please, Hussein.
I just got a question for Dr. Mila, this time around, who initiated this discussion, was it also the city?
I mean, this go.
Who initiated, I guess, is a better question.
To be honest, it goes, it goes back several years ago. So I don't recall directly. Oh, this year?
Yeah, this year, who restarted, who rekindled the discussion?
It really goes back to last year when, when it was probably myself, actually, because it was hanging out there and I, and it was discussed last year when you were president to bring it back to the City Relations Committee. Last year, we didn't get a chance with COVID. So I think I asked for it to come back on the, when I think you're the chair. I asked for it to be added to the agenda in Tom Wall. And then we were looking at getting it approved so that we could get ready, because last year, we, we probably would have pushed it sooner last year had we not been in COVID. But the reality is because of COVID, it wasn't as big of a priority when we were virtual.
Sure.
So the reason why we wanted it was because we're starting school in the fall now with students full force. So that's why the timeline got, you know, that's why it was, I wouldn't say urgent, but it was more of a need to get it moving as students are gonna return.
So we were in COVID last year. One thing we didn't know that, you know, our current mayor's gonna retire and we're gonna have a new administration. I'm just having a problem with, you know, I think either one of the gentlemen that get elected might have an issue with this.
It's got a thirty day opt-out, they can pull out.
Let me finish, I was talking, let me finish, please.
Oh, we need to extend the meeting.
Motion to extend the meeting, fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Uh, support.
So I did not know that.
Hold on. Got a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Petlic, uh, Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
See, I sit here.
Yes.
I sit here and respect everybody's time and listen and stuff like that, I don't interrupt anybody. Just let me finish my thought and you're welcome to address. So, I did not know that this is public knowledge that there's a thirty day opt-out. Since there is, but there's a cost, there's a financial and a human resource cost to this contract on both ends. So if there's a thirty day opt-out and I know at least one, most likely both, are gonna take a look at this and say, hmm, interesting, and probably. Let me finish. It's not that difficult. So, if in January, February, we can, I was looking to table it, if we can restart that discussion with the new administration, see how they feel, if they're on board, then hey, why not? Move forward, that's all I was trying to do.
Trustee Petlicoff.
There's no cost to this, where's the cost?
Is there, I thought there was insurance?
No.
No.
There's no cost to this.
Why isn't the contract, why isn't the contract that there's insurance and proof of insurance? Within twenty days of the blah, 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 you have to provide insurance. I mean, are we gonna have to, isn't the police department's gonna have to train people?
No. No, we're, they're, all they are going to do is get a number in order to access.
Why are we such in a hurry to do this? It's election year, there's gonna be a new mayor, new administration, there's gonna be some changes.
We've been talking about this for four years now.
That's good enough, okay.
And Trustee Barry, I've been mentioning since we brought this conversation back up that I wanted to be able to make some decision before the start of the school year. I think it makes the most sense to do it before the school year starts and not wait for a new administration to get in. We can move forward, if the city decides against it, then there we go.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes.
Does the current council and the mayor have to approve this as well?
Of course.
Uh, yes, they do.
Okay, so after we approve it, if we to approve it tonight, it would go on their agenda as well?
That is our expectation, but I can't tell you when. I don't know if it'll be at their next meeting, I don't know that.
I would have some, I think I'd have some.
Any additional discussion?
My question was just, is, per the contract, any party could pull out at any time? So, okay.
They would have to vote in a majority and get that going as well. Okay.
Hold on one second. I don't believe we would have to vote as a board to pull out of that. The administration could choose to.
I, I believe that's, yeah.
What?
You have a copy with you?
It's right, it's linked.
Let me read it, I did not know this is probably, let me read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the board report?
No, it's separate, I think.
No, it is.
Oh, is it, okay. It's in board orders, though, that's why I read it. It doesn't say who does the termination.
Well, I guess by virtue of us voting for it, then does that mean that we would have to vote to withdraw?
I would assume.
I would think that the board would probably wanna keep that right.
Yeah.
Either party may terminate this agreement if it is no longer in the best interest of the city, I would imagine, the administration through the council or the district to continue the same, I would imagine the district meaning the school board.
Yeah, so if we're voting for it, then we would have to vote to opt out.
Or council would have to.
Right.
Right. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Deambrazio? Not present. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes, motion carries. If we can please get a summary of agenda items.
Summary of agenda action items, number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of blanket purchase orders per board report twenty-one hyphen eleven. Number three, approval of award to NWEA. Number four to eight, approval of award to Cone Inc. Number nine to eleven, approval of ratification of contract. Number twelve to fifteen, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number sixteen, approval of two thousand twenty-one summer school graduates. Number seventeen, approval of policy updates, changes per board report twenty-one hyphen seventeen. Number eighteen, approval of interlo, inter-local agreement per board report twenty-one eighteen. Number nineteen, approval of donations. Number twenty, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Dearborn High. Number twenty-one, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Fortson. Number twenty-two, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Woodworth. Number twenty-three, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Salina Intermediate. Number twenty-four, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Miller. Number twenty-five, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Henry Ford. Number twenty-six, approval of appointment of executive director of student achievement. And number twenty-seven, approval, approval of appointment of athletic director at Edsel Ford.
So, I'm gonna ask all the administrators that just received the approval and they've been waiting here very patiently, let's give them a big round of applause.
And their kids have been waiting here as well, all of their kids.
And I know we have families and children and I apologize, it was just, unfortunately, thankfully, we didn't go back to that after midnight meeting that we had a little while ago. But I would ask all, I would ask all of you to come up together right now, maybe maintain your social distance. Then I'm gonna let everyone come to the podium, all of you who are here, if you could come up right now, please, all the administrators, and I'll announce you as you come up. Have the assistants and, and I know we have, I'll just mention one, Mr. Nail Jaddala is from Fortson. He's traveling, so he's not able to be here, but I will bring him in September. His advantage is that I'll bring him during commentary, so it'll be the beginning of the meeting, you guys are. But we are excited, appreciate your dedication and your time. First, gonna start with, we have Mr. Silver, I believe, I saw him. Mr. Silver, the new athletic director, I'll let him come up at Edsel Ford.
I just wanted to thank the board for the opportunity and I'm really excited to be back. Thank you.
Mr. Silver, if you can stay there, because I promised Yosra that we're gonna get a, and you've waited. So, I have the sign, we're gonna get a picture before you all leave, we're gonna take that time and get that. So, next I have Ms. Alisar Hamud, who's going to Henry Ford.
Hi, thank you.
You can come up a few later.
Hi, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Amal Shehab, Miller Elementary. Mr. Ali Salami, Woodworth. Mr. Mohammed Abu Sala, going to Salina Intermediate. Ms. Yosra Hamada is going to Dearborn High. You're welcome, if anyone wants to come, you're welcome, you don't have to. And then I have Mr. Adam Martin, who is the new executive director of student achievement.
So Glenn, of course I'm gonna say something. First of all, just thank you guys for the opportunity, I'm super excited. Looking forward to working with Glenn and continuing, living the mission. To my Dearborn pioneers, people, I love you all, gonna miss you very much and I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity five years ago to find a place, find a home at Dearborn High. It's been a fantastic five years and I've been blessed to be there. Lastly, to my wife and my children, guys, go to bed. I'll see you in a little while, thank you, guys.
Make this a quick picture so we don't have to keep extending.
I unleashed Hussein, I'm sorry.
Welcome to the dark side.
Actually, it'll probably take fifteen seconds.
Next item, please.
Analysis of correspondence.
We still got a meeting, don't we?
We all received several pieces of correspondence from the public over the last several weeks regarding items we discussed earlier.
No, don't.
Next item?
Board member committee and organization reports.
All right, we had a couple of subcommittees that met before this meeting.
Jen, go ahead. Go ahead, just get attention.
Could, could you all please quiet down a little bit? We wanna still get out of here tonight.
These are our new administrators.
Followed direction well.
Well, they were sitting quietly for three plus hours, so we gotta give them a little, with their.
All right, which subcommittee wants to go first?
I'll, I'll go first, I'll get it out of the way. So the finance, the finance committee met earlier today. So the, we were able to find out from the state what they were going to increase per pupil. We originally thought it was gonna be anywhere, an increase from fifty to a hundred dollars per pupil. We ended up with a hundred and seventy-one dollar per pupil increase. So we're currently at nine thousand thirteen per pupil. What that means, and I'll try to do justice to Mr. Walt, but that means, thank you, that with that increase, that our staff will see an increase in their pay of one point one six percent and that's something that's, was part of their contract that is connected. The student count during, during COVID, we were able to do super blend according to the state. We were at twenty thousand five hundred and eighty. We were projected to have a decrease of four hundred and ninety. We were projected to have a decrease of four hundred and ninety-three of twenty thousand eighty-seven. And we are currently trending, um, at twenty thousand four hundred. So we're, but we're trending better than projected for our student count. The state is going to go back to the old, um, count, so it'll be ten percent of last winter and ninety percent of this fall. So we'll no longer have a super blend. Um, the fund, the budget fund policy, um, so our, our, a healthy fund balance would be anywhere between fifteen to twenty percent. And this was something that we were discussing before. With that, um, the idea would be that there's a need for a budget stabilization fund. That is basically a rainy day fund. That would be board-approved, and we would be eligible to put away ten percent for a rainy, a rainy day. So it would be something, for instance, if a boiler were to break down, say at Salina. Instead of having to try to find the funds in general funds, as a board, we would be able to take some funds, put it aside for a rainy day so that when those issues happen with a bo- a boiler or a roof, something that we haven't projected, we could use those funds, um, accordingly. Um, it could be used for, and it's, it's limited for what it could be used, so it could be used for repairs. Um, but with that, we would need to have a new policy written to how those, the stabilization, the budget stabilization fund could be used. Um, the recommendations also within that policy would come from the administration, and they would be able to give us some sort of guidance as to what they would think that perhaps we could set that side, that money aside for when, when and if those issues do come forward. Um, the other thing is there's an update versus the CARES ESRS. So there were three different allocations. So back in two thousand twenty, twenty-one was ESRS one, I guess we could say. That was nineteen million seven hundred and two thousand four hundred and sixteen. Most of that was already spent. The next one was ESRS two, that was from the year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. That amount was thirty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, six hundred and ninety dollars. Um, whatever was remaining from the first allocation and the second, the funds were used for summer school and to increase our social workers in the schools so that all of our social worker, all of our schools was, were equipped with at least one full-time social worker. The next, um, ESRS three.
Sorry, we need to extend.
Like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes.
Alright, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee De Ambrazio, trustee?
Yes.
McDonald, trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor, hopefully this is the last one.
So the last allocation or the funds that we were gonna receive is for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-three. That amount is for eighty-six million dollars, thirteen thousand four hundred and eighteen. Within that amount, um, this is the first time the state has ever earmarked for infrastructure issues. Um, forty million of that, um, that's the max that can be used for HVAC, um, systems throughout the schools. So the intent is, because the max is forty million, to take that forty million and to assess the schools because we've heard that the parents, you know, with summer school, that air conditioning is an issue. Um, to assess the buildings, to find out how can we, which buildings would be able to have AC, um, and, or maybe a wing, um, windows, doors. But to, um, make it as comfortable as possible going forward, so that every school has some sort of comfort level. Um, right now, they're working on how much the cost would be, so based on the cost, they would have a better understanding where those needs would be based on the cost of the various buildings. It wouldn't be an entire building necessarily, I think it would depend on what the cost would be, the infrastructure, would it be the electrical on top of that? So every building obviously has its own needs, um, here in Dearborn. Um, the other part would be, so the remaining amount, so if you tab, take eighty-six million and you take away the forty million, that's earmarked specifically for HVAC, the remaining amount would be used for extending, extended learning, um, perhaps expansion, expanding the college or, um, instructional support. Um, right now, um, they are, the schools are, the administration is working with Plant Moran, and they're gonna help to go through the buildings and find and look at every building and structure with a ten-year outlook plan. The funds for, with Plant Moran, the idea is to take the forty million that's earmarked from ESRS and then combine that with funds that are set aside for the building and site funds with the idea of perhaps using sixty-five to eighty million total to achieve some of those goals in terms of the HVAC systems. Um, we're also looking at, um, architect bids that have come through from four different, um, architecture firms that were suggested by Plant Moran, um, and also looking at food service reinvestment of funds for equipment. Going forward, then the other thing that we discussed was the bond discussion. Um, right now, it's early stage of putting together the Community Infrastructure Commission that has the acronym C I P F. Um, in two thousand and twelve, we were at a district, we had a five point three six percent mills. In two thousand twenty-one, or is it two thousand twenty-two, Tom? Twenty-one, we have reduced that to three point five percent mills. Um, that's been done with, um, through the lens of making sure that we are physically responsible, we're intentional, but it's been through certain, um, refinancing of bonds. Uh, so the other opportunity-
And repairing of debt.
Yes, so the other opportunity that we're gonna be able to write, refinance on a, a sixteen million dollar bond, it will come up in spring of twenty twenty-two. With refinancing that sixteen million dollar bond, over the life of that bond, we will save four point nine million dollars. And that will also reduce the mileage rate. Um, going back to the architect fees, um, so there have been four that Plant Moran had suggested. Um, they're gonna look at, some are better at certain construction items with schools than others, so they're gonna kind of look through what Plant Moran may suggest to say this building may need X, Y, and Z, which architecture firm works best for that. Um, and that's something that they'll bring up, um, as well. Um, and then also there was, um, a discussion of purchase of property to expand, um, the early college at, the SME building. Um, they're waiting for a contractor to come in this Friday to do an inspection.
Anything else?
No.
She gets a A minus, huh?
Trustee Barry?
Yes, sir.
Is it you for policy?
Yes, sir. Yes, so we continue the discussion with the facility usage. Uh, we're not ready to recommend an update, uh, we're gonna meet again next month. Uh, bottom line is, uh, we're trying to be a good community partner, uh, with a lot of the different organizations that work with us. We can try to work something out to benefit them and at the same time, do what we need to do for the district.
Anything else?
That's all I have, sir.
Were there any other subcommittees? Alright, next item, please. You're on mute. Board member and superintendent commentary.
Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, just real quick, I wanna say congratulations to our summer graduates. And I also wanna say that we don't need to free ourselves from masks, we need to free ourselves from COVID. So please go get vaccinated. That's all I.
Any additional, trustee Barry?
Dr. Maleko, wishing you and your staff and all the students a great year this year, so best wishes. We'll be here for you.
Thank you. We're excited.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah, I am looking forward to the start of the year as well. Um, I'm very, very, very happy to hear about the increase for social workers that we will have, full-time social workers at each school. I think that was very, very important for each school to have, so quotas to goes to the administration for that.
Any additional, trustee Watts?
I just wanted to say happy first day to all of the students, the teachers and the parents. I'm not quite sure who's gonna be more excited and nervous the night before, but I just wish everybody a restful Sunday night. And I hope that everyone has an excellent, um, Monday.
Ditto on that.
Just quickly, I wanna mention, he's not on my section of the board agenda, but Chris Kennerberg was under the HR and he was approved. He had to leave, uh, but he was here for quite a while, uh, as the supervisor networks and applications, um, on the regular HR. And if I could just mention, yes. And with our district does great work, so we're excited to have him and team Mr. Addy over there. Um, and mit, uh, trustee Barry, um, I did get an answer on the, there's full seasons for middle school and the schedules are out. The athletic directors, um, are aware and it's on the site, and I guess they can practice up to two weeks before the start of the season. So that's what Abe Misher did send that message. Thank you.
And there will be inaugural soccer season for middle school this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's exciting.
Alright, any additional?
Request for information? Oh.
No, go.
Request for information and/or future agenda items. I already requested information for the contingency plans. Um, and for special ed.
Trustee Moses, the meetings are all blending together. Was it at the last college meeting that you asked how the college was spending the different funds through COVID?
Yes.
And so, and so there's gonna be the continuation of that, which trustee Watts was kinda talking a little bit about, but, um, a breakdown of how we've spent all the one-time federal money through these different programs. I'm not gonna give the specific names, cause I can't remember them all right now.
And that was discussed, but we can get a report to the full board. It was what Tom discussed in the finance.
And I, I would like that to be also publicly available once we see it.
Uh, going back to what trustee Watts was talking about with the finance committee, would we be having a presentation to the full board about this idea of the, the sinking fund, I think is kinda what you were talking about?
Um, Tom, can you remind me how it was left? Yes, we're meeting next month.
The subcommittee will meet next month.
Yes, we will meet next month, we said. Thank you.
Any additional request for information or future agenda items? Trustee Watts?
Um, I think this, some of this already Dr. Patterson had mentioned, but I would, um, and I know that he said that he'll be bringing it to the board in the next couple of months, just the standardized testing and the benchmarks and just to kinda get an idea of where we were and where we are and some suggestions. And the other thing is that we had, part of that was the tie-in to the teacher evaluation. Um, but I don't know, and I would like to get information, how the principals are evaluated and how that's all tied in as well.
Now, with some of that, though, it sounded like it could be a couple of months before they could really give us a presentation.
Right, so they, yeah, so I know the presentation is in, I know that they're working behind the scenes, so I just wanted to make sure.
So it could be a little bit of time before we're able to get that back?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. If there's no additional items, we can move on to the, uh, next agenda item.
Future meeting dates, Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education meeting, seven PM, the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM, at the Administrative Service and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, in the Rosenau Boardroom.
I hope everyone enjoys these last couple days of summer before we come back into session for the school, and we are adjourned.
David?